Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton, and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions with Nate.
Hi, Namorino Student Representative.
Jeff Boe.
Dustine Puma.
Good evening, Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Teneral.
Ryan McMahon.
Danielle Lathanis.
Rob Mullin.
Good evening, Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
And this evening, we also have the Finance Committee with us.
Good evening, Ryan Schneider.
Ed Smith.
Welcome. Please rise for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes from the Budget Subcommittee Meeting on January 31st, 2023, the February 7th, 2023 School Committee Meeting Minutes, and the February 7th, 2023 Executive Session Minutes. Executive Session Meeting Minutes not to be released at this time.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Oppose? That carries. Citizen time? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to take items 8B and 8C out of order.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries. 8B.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to provide the committee with an update, pleased to say, and Mike, you can go to the next slide, appreciate it, pleased to say that the capital improvement project that we've been working in collaboration with Valley Collaborative in the past several years is finally complete. HVAC system, new windows, new playground, all new paint, and certainly additional renovations put into that facility by Valley Collaborative. The spreadsheet is on the next slide, but I think these pictures tell a better story. That was a building that we've had a long-term lease with them, beginning back in 2016. We renegotiated the lease probably two years ago, we signed it last January, to have them put in more funding to actually complete the window project there. So that is a viable building that's lively in our community. I think the three important things about that are, we were able to work in collaboration with Valley Collaborative to invest $2.7 million into that school at no cost to the taxpayer. I think the second thing that's important is, we have a viable tenant in that school that will continue to make enhancements and improvements not coming out of their lease money. They're doing it anyways on their own because they appreciate the facility. Additionally, it provides an opportunity for Tingsboro students who require that programming to be at a school in their own community, which obviously reduces our costs in terms of transportation because kids are on vans for a much shorter distance. And I think the final point that I want to nail home with the community is, as a result of this lease agreement, which runs through 2033, $150,000 of that lease over the next 10 years, or $1.5 million, will be used to offset any borrowing done for the Tingsboro Middle School. As you recall, last year, the town manager and the board of cycling came up with a spending plan on how they're going to finance it for the next 10 years. $150,000 of that per year, or $1.5 million, was coming from this Valley lease. So the project is complete, the school looks great, Valley finished painting the outside trim as well, they've updated the playground, they just do a great job and are a great partner to have in our community. So I'm happy to say that it took us a while to get here, but we're here, and it's fruitful for both the community and for the students at Valley. So I just want to provide that quick synopsis. Mike, if you just go to the next slide, Mr. Messina, that's the spending breakdown to date, so $2.64 million. So if the committee has any questions about that, you've seen the lease, we've had these discussions all along, I just wanted to finally say that we're putting the cherry on top and it's over.
That's great. I'm happy to see that school is, it's like a new school. Thank you for your work on that.
It is, it's got good bones, so we appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Questions for Dr. Flanagan? All right, we can move on to 8C.
Great. So our initial budget presentation, we've tried for the past month to get before you and have this meeting, however, Mother Nature did not cooperate. So much like we've done in the past, the budget development process is an ongoing fluid process that begins in December. We work with the administrative teams, and we identify needs in the district, we look at our programming, and I think one of the things that we say each and every year, it's important not to just pick up what we have and put it down the following year. We really need to look at our students, look at our population, look at our needs, and that is driven by our strategy for district improvement. We know what our goals are, we know what we hope to accomplish for our community as a public education system, and we need to make sure that we can develop a budget that supports that. That being said, we have been working with the town manager, Mr. Messina and I have had several meetings with Matt Hanson, the town manager, to talk about where we are at the budget, we've had several check-ins, and I would say that this year has been certainly more difficult than any I can recall as a superintendent. This was the most difficult budget process we've had, given the fact that we're seeing significant increase in percentages and costs across the board. As the committee will recall, we talked about OSD, that's another highlight that we'll touch on a slide here in a little bit, Operational Services Division, which is a branch of the Executive Office, Administration of Finance, and that 14%, we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. And just the overall increase in needs of students, you know, the demographics in our schools are changing, and we've had conversations ongoing about this throughout the year, but the number of services, tuitions, and transportation have really gone up. And for those who don't know at home, you know, this budget that you're going to see tonight, this initial budget presentation, this represents anyone in Tingsboro aged two years and nine months through age 22 who requires specialized services. This isn't about Tingsboro Elementary, Tingsboro High, this goes beyond that. Any child in this district who's aged two years and nine months through age 22 that requires specialized services is built into this budget because we're obligated per Master General Law to educate those children and provide those services. So as we think about this budget, and I know that Mr. Messina is going to hammer this home, there are literally thousands of moving parts, these kids, our staff, their needs, changes every day. This budget is developed as of here and now, today, March 21st, I believe. It's going to change, it's going to evolve, it needs to be somewhat fluid. We don't know who's going to move in the district this summer, we don't know who's going to move out of this district this summer, we don't know what staff are going to leave in June, or what staff we're going to have to hire in June. This budget is for here and now, and there needs to be some fluidity in it because of the changing demographics and the thousands of moving parts. So that's the overall synopsis. As we think about the cost of education, go to the next slide, please, Mr. Messina's got to touch on a couple important factors, foundation budget as well as Chapter 70, so I'll turn to Mr. Messina at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So we're going to talk a lot tonight about what we see increases as we develop the budget, and this slide just shows the foundation budget for Tingsboro that's set by the state, as well as the required district contribution, what Tingsboro is expected to put towards education, and then the difference is the Chapter 70 aid that comes from the state for education for Tingsboro. You can see, year over year, that the percent change is growing, the foundation budget grows by over 5%. The required district contribution grows by over 3%, but what the state is giving us is less than 1% in an increase in aid. So even though they tell us that our foundation budget will increase and the required net school spending will increase, they don't match up with the aid that they provide to us.
So we'll go to the next slide. So we talked about the costs, we talked a little bit about Operational Services Division, OSD. Essentially, what happened was a unilateral decision was made in September, October by the Executive Office of Administration of Finance that private residential programs should increase their tuitions by 14%. As you look on here, from FY11 to FY23, the average growth was 2.7%. In one year, it's jumping by 14%. So that alone is a $137,000 increase to our budget. There have been, we've advocated, I made the town manager aware of this on November 2nd in an email, I reached out to Senator Kennedy, Representative Gary, myself, as well as superintendents throughout the state, to say a 14% jump in one year is unheard of, and it is crippling to a lot of districts. You know, you see $137,000 increase right there, our growth is about $600,000 as a district, that's at 2.7%. So that 137 certainly is impactful to our budget this year. So we've had conversations about this, we've seen this coming, but it's certainly something we have to deal with. Next slide. The other thing is, I talked a little bit about the changing demographics of our community. You know, though our district enrollment has decreased by 5.27% in one year, our special education services increased by 5.76%. So as a district, we're at 21.7% of students who required individualized specialized services. With that comes costs, with that comes support services and related service providers and substantially separate programming, so there is a cost that comes with that. In addition to that, we talked about demographics changing in the community, in just 2019, we had 54 students who were identified as English learners. We now have 120 students. Again, with that comes an additional level of support and staffing to support those kids and make sure that they're successful in the classroom. We talked about out-of-district tuition costs going up by 4% to 5% across the board, that's an increase of $689,000 to the district. With out-of-district tuitions comes transportation, that cost has increased by $114,000. All of that being said, and I like to say this every year, these are our kids, and we're going to do everything we can to provide them all the services and education they need. The fact of the matter is, there's a cost that goes with it. So as we try to live with the 2.7%, it becomes very difficult. As you recall, a few months ago, we were back here, we presented our preliminary budget, not the initial budget, the preliminary budget, and at that point, when we took in the factors of what the administration was requesting, what we thought we needed for student needs, what we thought we needed for support services, we were at about a 6.6% increase. So we went back to our administrative team, and we said we need to tighten the belt, we need to look at every possible solution, and as I said at the beginning, in the onset, we don't just pick it up and put it down next year, we look at what our kids need. As you recall, last year, at this time last year, this committee made a decision that we're going to prioritize social emotional learning. Well, because those are the last positions in doesn't mean those are the first ones up. That need hasn't changed, so we're not going to do that, we're going to have to think differently about the rest of our programming to see how we get from 6.6% down to 2.7%. All of that being said, that's the high-level version of where we are. Now, I get to turn it to Mr. Messina, we get to get into spreadsheets. So we'll be happy to, we're going to go through it, and if there's any questions you have, and we'll kind of play off each other here. So, Mr. Messina, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan, and to sort of save Mr. Woodlock from bouncing between pages and everybody trying to see the pages, I did leave a packet for everybody. So this packet is basically what Mike is going to work on the screen, but the top page is where we left the budget on February 7th. For the members of the Finance Committee, this is basically our budget condensed to focus on what I'd like to call our three big rocks, staffing, out-of-district tuitions, transportation, and then there's a smaller rock, utilities. And as you can see, that's pretty much the largest amount of the school committee budget right in those four areas. So on February 7th, what we're looking for for preliminary budget in terms of what we currently had for staff, along with a few asks of the administrative team down below, was a $23.7 million budget or a 6.6% increase. And I think at that time, I think the school committee, the superintendent, and myself all realized that we were not going to come to the town and ask for a 6.6% increase. You know, as the superintendent said, we're going to work with the administrative team, look at what our needs are, look to see where we can make some adjustments, and go from there. And one thing the school committee didn't see back on February 7th was where the current staffing is, and the second page is just basically the February 7th budget, looking at not just the FY23 budget and the FY24 budget, but the middle column as to where our current headcount is. So we're currently at slightly over 255 staff, and with a slight increase in the part-timer, that's where that top number started, at 255.3 for staff, with the one additional ELL teacher added at the bottom, brought us to the preliminary budget of 256.3 for staff. So if you look at the third page, this is basically, how do we get from the February 7th budget to where we are tonight? So realizing we had about $1.4 million growth and six additional staff people from last year's budget, we took a look at some of the areas where we could make some changes. So the first change is, part of our revenue offsets is a credit that Valley Collaborative issues. If they have more tuitions collected than planned, they do have an agreement in place with the state to give the money back to the member districts. What we historically have done is used a portion of that to offset our budget, and any additional monies from Valley for tuitions goes into the SPED stabilization account at the town level. So we initially had a $25,000 number in that Valley credit compared to $50,000 last year. With the superintendent meeting with Valley Collaborative, it looked like they could probably be able to staff to a level of where they would continue to have a growth in their tuitions and have money that they would be able to give back to the member districts. So even though we didn't get a credit from them this year, we feel comfortable going back to the original amount of that credit, similar to last year's budget. The next line represents, we have two identified retirees, longstanding teachers, that if we replace them with a Step 1 new hire, that will save us about $56,000 in the budget. We have one out-of-district student that we identified, again, as the superintendent mentioned, we are fiscally responsible for students up to age 22. At this point, we have an indication that they are actually going to take their diploma early and will not be staying in the collaborative, so we're going to remove that tuition from the budget.
And that's a risk. That student may make a decision at some point, that student is not 22 yet and is eligible for another year, so if they choose not to take their diploma, we'll have to absorb that cost. But there's a level of risk with that.
You're just trying to get me, you're just trying to get me, that's it. Sorry. It's okay. At the bottom of the first page, you saw about $11,000 that the administrators asked in terms of new supplies, new training, some physical plant changes. We basically looked at those and removed some, and others we would absorb into a regular budget, so we took that $11,000 out of the budget request. We asked all the budget centers, the schools, and all the support departments to look at their supplying materials and reduce wherever possible. That totaled about $61,000 in reduced supplies. The next three all sort of come together as a summer learning program, as the school committee knows, and for the Finance Committee, we've run a fairly robust summer learning program as a result of COVID in some of the gaps in learning, and that was costing about $90,000 to the district. So on the first pass of this, we removed the $90,000 from the budget, but then in conversations with the town manager, he thought that some of the opera funding remaining, I know it's a small amount, but some of the town opera funding, $40,000 of it, might go towards an enhanced ESY program, which will look slightly different than the last two years of summer programming, but slightly larger for extended school year than we were running previously.
And just add a caveat, ESY is a mandated program for students who are IEPs, so we are obligated to run that program. What we've done in the past is partnered that with what we call the Jump Start Program to do those, fill some of those gaps hopefully from the past COVID years. What we're looking to do is keep ESY intact, obviously we're mandated to do that, and we will, but we're really going to modify what Jump Start looks like. We did some research and pulled some data from all the schools, and we're not really, I think the data is inconclusive as to how successful it was filling some of those gaps. So at this point, you know, it's a cost, and it's certainly, you know, that additional $50,000, that's a teacher in the classroom for the school year, so we're comfortable, or we prefer to pull off of that and not offer that program, so that's the plan going forward.
Thank you. Also, in meeting with the town manager, as we discussed, the Operational Services Division, 14% increase in tuitions, the town manager thought that transferring $100,000 free cash into the SPED stabilization would be able to supplement the school committee budget should the out-of-district tuitions reach the level that we think they're going to reach. And again, that would be an item that we would try to keep that as untouched as possible as the school year goes through. We are utilizing all of the SPED stabilization money in this budget reconciliation, and it certainly would be our goal to protect as much of that stabilization going forward into next year. After all that look-through, what it comes down to when we were looking at the additional reductions is staffing. And looking at the non-instructional support staff, just giving a hard look at those departments, we're recommending a 3.5 staff cut in those departments, which will save the district approximately $142,000. The next two, Dr. Flanagan?
Sure, historically, we've tried to empower teachers and provide leadership opportunities. Currently, we have 20 leadership opportunities for teachers in the district. By reducing that from 20 to 14, we'll be able to save $26,000, and the position that we would target there would be district-wide and non-core subject leadership positions. And then the final one is, it comes down to reduction in staffing. So as we look at reducing five positions across the district, I think one of the things that we talked about was taking the two retirees and absorbing those positions. So as we think about different grade levels, and I prefer not to get into specific grade levels right now, we don't have the benefit of having multiple elementary schools or middle schools, so if we say grade three, there's only five of them, we're having lunch tomorrow together. So it's not grade three, but if we talk about that. So basically, if we reduce those two retiree positions, absorb those, class size would go from 17 and 18 in some of our grades to 21, 22 some of our grades. Still manageable, still within the contractual language. The other thing we talked about was looking at our special education delivery pattern. If we were to reduce two special education positions in the district, we could deliver special education in a different manner at the middle school, so it would be, you know, 77 students by, between five teachers, which would case load about 16 students per teacher, which is appropriate and which jives with what we do at the elementary and the high school, it would just break up that potential teaming model of that. Now, that doesn't mean they're all going to have 16 students, we would assign based on need and caseload, but that's about the average, which is appropriate for the district. Not best practice, certainly not best practice for teaming, but it would be something that we could do. And the other thing was, we have currently six substantially separate programs at TES. We could potentially, because of students matriculating in the middle school and looking at student needs, we could potentially go down to five substantially separate programs at TES. So that would be another position there. And the final position, the fifth position that we talked about, we prioritize as a district EL on the budget. We would look at reassigning a teacher in the district from a different discipline, a non-core elective discipline, to potentially move into that role and provide EL support. So those would be the five potential cuts that we're talking about to staffing and teachers. As we think about this, it's important for me to say, you know, we strive to present as comprehensive a program as possible, and we're mindful of, if we cut, let's take middle school art teacher, then we have no middle school art for all our kids because we have a singleton teacher. So we're trying to protect the integrity and the breadth of the programming for our students because every kid is going to find their niche somewhere. So we want it to be as broad and comprehensive as possible, so it really came down to class size discussions, K to 12. So those would be the five potential recommended cuts to instructional positions, which would bring us an additional $311,000.
Thank you. So that basically is a summary of $863,000 in reductions, it's eight and a half staff people, so that gets your budget at this moment down to 247.8 for staff and a $22.8 million budget, which is a 2.71 growth over this year's budget. So just what that looks like in terms of our budget sheets. The next page is basically the staffing, again, where we were last year for the budget, where we are currently for staffing, and then the new 247.8 staff people for a salary number of a little over $19.4 million. And if you flip to the next page, here is tonight's current budget overview sheet, and this, again, shows you the staffing, the first large cost for your district, out-of-district tuitions, with that slight change, still is a 34% growth, and that's based upon, for the Finance Committee, that's based upon the roster, the way we see it developing on July 1 at this moment in time. So it takes not just students that are currently placed out, but maybe some potential students that we've identified that have moved in since the last budget prep, or maybe struggling in district, and we know that at some point, you know, probably before July 1, there'll have to be a move out of district. So that's the current roster with that increase. Again, as the superintendent mentioned, for transportation, the regular ed, we actually reduced a bus this year, so even though the cost per bus per day is increasing, our overall cost for regular ed transportation is going down, $31,000 next year, and specialized transportation, which is the vans both for out-of-district and for in-district for our students, is increasing by $114,000. Utilities, that's a small increase of 8%, and that's primarily due to when we prepare the budget for utilities, we're always looking at our last actual full year of utilities. And when we developed last year's budget, that last full year was the COVID year, and we really, you know, didn't take into account the fact that our usage dropped dramatically due to the shutdown of the buildings. So we were slightly under budget this year. Fortunately, we're getting some better rates for natural gas, and we have a very good rate for electricity that we're locked into for next year, so the increase is only going up by $38,000 there. The next set of numbers are all of the various budget centers, the schools and the support departments, and what their expenses look like compared to last year. Excuse me. And you'll see, a lot of that is the reduction in supplying materials at the budget centers, but also takes into account those Meramec fellows that we do not have in this year's budget that we had in last year's budget, that basically translated to where we are with the increase in staff this year. For cover page expenses, I actually broke this out going forward on the budget overview page, just so you can see what some of those cover page expenses are. These are expenses that don't fit into any of the budget centers. Again, you can see the summer learning, the reduction we spoke about. The grant funding, that's primarily a line that, when we have grants that we receive that aren't targeted to any particular budget line, in order to balance the budget when we look at revenues, we have to come up with the targeted areas that aren't in our budget that those grants are going to be spent on. The rest are all even, pensions go up on this sheet due to the fact that, when we talk about revenue on the next page, we're using the last of our COVID ESSR grant funding, the last $300,000 that we've reserved for next year's budget, and when we pay a salary out of a grant, it's mandated that we pay 9% to the retirement board for any federal salaries that are paid out of those grants, so that's why you see that number increasing. And the other revenue number in blue, if you can just flip to the next page... And the other revenue number in blue, if you can just flip to the next page, this is basically all of the revenues outside of the school committee budget that supplement the school committee budget in running the system. You see grant revenues are up by 13% and again primarily because that ESSER grant will be used to zero it out. Tuitions are down primarily because the exchange program is not as robust as we had hoped it to be. So we always use the previous year's exchange tuition revenue for the next year's budget. So this is based upon what we have for students this year to use the revenue for next year. And then any revenue we get next year will go towards FY '25. Athletic revenues are pretty much static. And the rest of the other source revenues, Medicaid, School Choice, student parking, lease money, circuit breaker, sped stabilization, as well as the town ARPA. The highlight I want to give you there, as I mentioned before, this budget is balanced based upon full use of our stabilization account for special education. So that's 234,000. Again, it'd be our hope to hold that as harmless as possible as we go through next year's spending. Certainly hope not to drain it down to zero. So that $3.2 million in revenue, you can actually see at the bottom of the previous page. And with the Valley Collaborative Credit being the same as last year, we come down to that same $22.8 million that you saw on the previous slide. And finally, the last two pages of the packet is just basically your two-page budget as we normally present it without taking it in the overview form and putting it back out to the each budget center by salaries and by expenses. Unfortunately, all three of those tie out to the same number, which certainly wanted to make sure that was going to happen.
Matt Jeff, I can just make one final comment. I think we, as a community, benefit in so many ways from having somebody who's done this job for 22 years and knows every line in this budget, knows every dollar in this budget, and does a phenomenal job with understanding it, presenting it, explaining it to the superintendent multiple times, telling me, no, we can't do that, yes, we can do this. So we're so fortunate to have Mr. Messina here. And I would encourage anyone at home who's looking, this material is all available online. If you have any questions about it, please reach out to Mr. Messina directly. It was difficult to get here, but you know, with Mr. Messina's direction and advice, and constantly we got there. So that's where we are. And we're happy to answer any questions about it. Joe's happy to answer any questions about it.
I have more of an observation. These are a lot of cuts. We haven't seen cuts like this in our budget in my tenure on the committee. This feels like a lot of cuts and you know what the school needs. But it doesn't seem sustainable. So when we're, I know we need to deal with the year ahead of us, but when we're here the next year, we can't do this again, can we?
I hope not. I mean, no, we can't cut eight and a half positions every year. You know, right now, we're getting class sizes up to 22 to 24. You know, the next thing is 28 to 30. And that's a contractual issue. We can't have 30 kids in a classroom. That's not best practice. That's not even appropriate. You know, and this budget right here reflects the wants and desires of the district from December. And even in December, when we went with the administrative team, it was, listen, this is going to be a rough budget year, so we need bare bones requests. This doesn't talk about the additional social emotional needs we have. This doesn't talk about a literacy coach in the elementary school. This doesn't talk about bringing a math coach or literacy coach up to the middle school. All things that we've had conversations about in the past. We came with very limited requests in December and kind of worked off of that. So no, you know, and we've had this conversation with the town manager. 2.7, I understand that. It's nice. But when we have thousands of moving parts and kids that could potentially walk into the district, you know, for those at home who don't know, a residential program could be upwards of $350,000 for one student. And if that student moves into this community in July, it's our obligation. And this budget's already been approved. And this is what we're living with. So there are a lot of moving parts and it's a fluid process. You say it all the time. You didn't say it tonight, but the budget is a living, breathing thing. So we can't continue to go eight and a half cuts a year. That being said, circuit breaker potentially could go up next year. Some of our revenues could potentially go up next year because of this extraordinary impact of our district costs this year. So there could be some offset there. You know, I know that on the town side, I mean, we all know that new growth was down. It wasn't what it was projected to be. So that impacts as well. If there's new growth in the community, that could potentially help it. So it's hard, it's virtually impossible to say it's going to be this percentage every year going forward when we don't know what our staffing and our student needs are going to be. And it's going to continue to change. That's just the nature of budgeting for us.
So I just echo what you said. First, let me just say that knowing all the moving parts here, I applaud what you've done because I know this is near impossible to get right and to live within that 2.7%. You know, what I'm seeing is that out of district and the transportation is, you know, $770,000 increase just there. And we're really essentially slashing the rest of the budget just to keep funding that. And so I guess one of my questions is, do we have a feel, is this an aberration? Or are we seeing, you know, much larger increases in the out of district and in the transportation budget than the 2.7% that we're trying to live within? Is this going to be something that we're going to be facing with? Because I agree with you. I don't think that we can continue to do that because we're cutting teachers just to be able to fund those two line items.
I think one of the things that we talk about every year with transportation is, and don't get me wrong, we love our provider. They do a great job. But when we go out to bid, we generally get one bid. And I think that could be echoed in every community in the Commonwealth. So the competitive bid process is one of the things that we first have to deal with. In terms of an aberration, Joe, do you want to expand on that a little bit?
So I guess the smartest way for me to say that is, we don't know. And we've had some budget subcommittee meetings that we talked about the needs of the preschool currently. And generally, when we start looking at a class from year to year, we may identify a particular class that, for whatever reason, may cost the district a little bit more. It's happened in the past. And we see this preschool class as one of those classes that is highly in need of services. And that's some of what's driving some of the specialized transportation as well. The number of students that we're transporting in district has grown tremendously this year. So we talk about, is this an aberration or is this a trend? I think the superintendent's had some discussion at his level in terms of what the services are for the younger grades. And is this something that we have to identify is going to happen year over year now? Is it a pandemic-related blip in the budget? So I don't know. I don't think the superintendent knows whether or not. We're hoping it's an aberration and maybe just one of those grades that as everything starts to stabilize, both in the economy and in society as a whole in terms of post-pandemic, maybe some of this will calm down and we won't see these large growth numbers. But I think we've said it at building committee meetings, very rarely do you see the numbers go all the way down. You know, they'll go down and we'll celebrate the fact that they've gone down, but they're still up here compared to where they were in the past.
And I would just add that you may hear conversations over the next couple of weeks about Governor Haley potentially putting more money towards offsetting some of the OSD costs to districts across the board. And we would celebrate that and say, hey, that's great. But I'm sure the town manager is saying, it's coming from somewhere. So, you know, it's kind of a give and take. And I would say, I'd like to say, it's been outstanding working with Matt Hansen on this process as well. It's been very smooth the past several years. He does a great job. He understands our needs. He recognizes that this is not a Tinsborough issue. This is certainly a Commonwealth issue, if not a national issue. But the conversations I'm having in local communities, they're all looking, you know, three and a half, four and a half percent increase just to maintain services for next year. So we're not alone.
Yeah. And I, just a comment, to the extent that you're seeing some of those transportation costs at the much younger grades, we're going to own those students, right? They're not going to disappear. So just have to bear that in mind. If we're seeing an increase now, those, as they continue to ripple through all the grades, that's going to be the same thing.
And we did have our special education department come in front of the school committee a couple of meetings ago. And we did talk about that as a committee, is this, you know, is this something that even this grade, if it's an aberration, this grade will travel from preschool on through to grade 12 and most likely to age 22? So, you know, certainly in my office, we're well aware of that going forward.
Ed, any comments, questions?
Well, I mean, I have, this is my first time basically at one of these meetings, going through this whole thing. And I have definitely a lot of questions, but I'm going to read over and then I'll ask my questions within the next few days, you know what I mean? So I'm not wasting everybody's time. You know, I do have a lot. The only thing I actually see here that really aggravated me was the student parking. I remember when it first came to my kids with the school. You know, charging the kids the parking card. I'm sorry. That's just, it's a little thing. It's just $20,000 item. I know you guys are looking for revenue. But I remember one of my kids went to high school and then we first got the thing. And what do they charge a parking card? Is it still $200 a year per student?
It's $180, Joe?
It's $200 to start the year on a sliding scale down. So it does start at 200. If you're coming in March or April to buy it.
Do you pay for more per, like if you have two kids driving, is it still one fee?
If they only bring one car, it's only one fee. But if they want to have two cars. I mean, I understand where you're going. My kids, when they were here.
I know. Just saying, like I said, I haven't read one of these budgets. It's my first time actually reading the whole school budget. And I'm just saying, that's one of the things that, it's a small item. It's only 20 grand. It just seems like, when I was a parent with two kids in the high school and I got that bill, I'm like, why would I have to?
Related to fees, the budget subcommittee is planning to reevaluate all fees after we get through the budget cycle. So we are, there has been discussion of looking at all fees, be it athletic fees, participation fees, and parking fees as well.
Right. I remember they had the parking fee, then it was $2.50 per sport. And then if you did two sports, it went down. I just thought, I mean, I just saw that. I haven't had a kid in high school. I mean, I have three kids, well, one, my grandson's in first grade. And I got two going to be born in the next three months that are going to be coming through the schools. You know, and I know this is a hard budget for you guys. And I mean, it's a very hard thing to do. Like you said, I agree. There's moving parts. You don't know what's going to happen. You don't know who's coming into the school this year, who's moving into town, who's moving out of town. Your budget could change by half a million dollars at the blink of an eye without you even knowing it. So I applaud you for doing all this work.
I hope we know it.
I know, but I say, it's a moving target.
Yes, absolutely.
There's no way to tell what's going to happen during the school year. You could have three people move in, two move out, and you just don't know. I applaud you for the special. I know Tinsborough is one of the best special ed in the area.
And I would say, you know, we can talk about cutting fees, but it's like pushing on a balloon, right? If we decrease that, then it's going to have to come from somewhere if we're going to stay at 2.7. So it's, you know, it's just pushing and shoving to try to figure out where are you going to make that cut or where are you going to find that revenue from. We would all love not to charge the kids for anything, but that means it's going to come from somewhere else.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Does the committee have any comments, questions about the budget?
I have one question. So for cutting eight positions, do we have any concerns about, I know we're already struggling when teachers are out covering classrooms. How does this impact that?
Yeah. We're going to be, yeah. Are we concerned about that? Yes. We can't get subs right now as it is. Basically, you know, we have a difficult time covering classes. And our teachers do a great job of supporting each other and covering for each other when they can. But the fact of the matter is, you know, at the elementary school, we're pulling paraprofessionals to cover classes, which means we're not providing services. At the high school, we do the best we can in terms of having teachers cover classes. It's a problem. It's a problem. And this won't help it.
I have another question on that point. I was going to ask that a little bit, but how do you decide on, like when you say your kid kept eight positions, how does that decision come? Does it go by, you know, what needs, what class size is?
Yes, 100%. The whole administrative team comes together and we look at what we can do. And we think, how can we do things differently to provide as comprehensive a program as possible? Still providing the kids the support they need. And, you know, if we can reduce a position because of retirement, we're going to do that. We don't want to put good people out of work. So if we can reassign somebody into a newly positioned we just created, we're going to do that because we have great teachers in this district. I don't want to lose any of them. But the fact of the matter is, our original budget came in at 1.6 million or 1.4 million, excuse me, we have to get down to 600,000. So tough decisions were made. But we did that as a full administrative team. We looked at everything we've done. And I mean it when I say, we don't just pick it up and put it down. We look at everything and really we're finding, year over year over year, the program we have and how we deliver it to the students of Tinsborough.
Now, this is my first year. Now, what has been your average increase over the last five years per year? I know you, this year is going to be.
2.5 to 2.8.
So between two and 3% roughly is what you've been averaging every year for an increase.
This year's an aberration, though, as I said. Most communities are going up significantly this year because of the OSD impact as well as out of district costs and transportation costs. Joe, it's a fair statement. I don't like throwing numbers out there running by you.
No, no, absolutely right. And I think you and I have talked, you know, probably ad nauseam to both of us about this. But it is something. And in terms of transportation, we're not alone with other districts. I'm a member of a group of administrator listserv on emails. And that's the question going out there. How many companies came to your pre-bid conference and how many bids did you get? There is not one single district that's answered, and I think we're up to 25 districts, that didn't say they had one bid. We had one bid two years ago. And DBUS understood that it was a large number and came back and as the lowest bidder, you know, only bidder, they said, well, maybe we can do a little bit better for you. And, you know, certainly appreciated that DBUS understands the position we're in, where they'll say, we're not going to grow it by what we can charge you. We're going to, you know, what we think we can both live with for a number. And they've done that many times during the contracts in my time here, which I, you know, I think I've always said it to the school committee that, you know, they're very good partners with us when it comes to that. And certainly when I hear districts saying that they just opened bids and they have 14 and 15% increases. And a lot of that is bus companies that the pandemic itself sort of took a chunk out of their business. I mean, we shut down operations in March and we didn't go to school for the rest of the year and we didn't pay the bus company a full amount. We negotiated a smaller amount just to cover some of their fixed costs. And then, you know, like many districts, we went hybrid in the fall. And, you know, again, the patterns look different than what all of these bus companies in the state were used to dealing with. So a lot of bus companies are coming to their districts saying, you know, we need more, we need more. And DBUS didn't do that with us.
No, they've been a great partner.
Jeff, did you have a question?
I had a couple. Just looking at where we are financially from a national perspective of increasing inflation rates, the banking crisis we're in right now, and really kind of facing a recession at the same time. Are we, I think we're seeing that it's very likely that the numbers we're seeing today, we're probably going to see again next year. Does the 2.7, is that something that, you know, we're trying to stay away from that six and a half percent mark, but that six and a half and the year after, does that now become eight, nine, 10%? Because we're on our heels this year and looking at being even further on our heels in the future. So I guess it's 2.7 just too, too tight?
It's tight. It's tight. I mean, we pick up a little bit more, right, with the sped stabilization potential safety net. You know, hopefully we're not going there. We pick up a little bit with the ARPA funding, provided that comes through. And town managers seem to think that's coming through. So there's a little bit of additional funding on top of the 2.7. So I wouldn't say it's pure 2.7, but, you know, it's, I can't answer the question. We don't know. It's going to be tough. But we also don't, we can't project what the revenue is going to be for a circuit breaker next year. So that'll help in some manner. So I'm not trying to dance. I don't know what the answer is. I really don't.
No, I think it's not the right answer to that one, but.
You know, to sort of piggyback off of what the superintendent is saying, you know, with the increased cost in tuitions, organically, circuit breaker should go up because by law, they are supposed to reimburse the school district 75% of all of the costs over four, two and a half times foundation. But it took them a number of. But it took them a number of years to fund it to the mandate. I think the first year was 50%, even though the law said you have to fund to 75%. They gave 50% to the, to the cities and towns, which I've always recommended to this committee, and will always recommend to this committee, to use this year's Circuit Breaker funding in next year's budget, because we know what we're getting this year. And use next year's funding in the FY '25 budget, which, organically, if everything is the same, should go up. So that's an increased revenue, that, again, will, will able to supplement your budget to a certain degree. Medicaid reimbursements have seemed to start to grow, uh, the last two years. So if we continue to use a five-year average for Medicaid growth, then that revenue should continue to grow a little bit to help that 2.7 growth number not grow, you know, out to 8 and 9%. And you start at a lower staffing base. If, if, if this is your budget, this budget gets approved, you're starting at 247 staff people at that point. So the growth shouldn't be 8 and 9% because we've, we've reduced by 8.5.
And, and then with the staffing reductions, the potential staffing reductions, you know, we do talk about not leaving students behind, but are we unintentionally not considering the other students that are maybe higher performers that are now not necessarily gonna have the, you know, maybe additional services available to them that is maybe making the classes more challenging for them?
So I'll speak to that, in terms of programming itself, we kept the comprehensive program intact, essentially we're, it's gonna go, it's gonna be a class size issue this year. Um, you know, we have those two, uh, special education things that we're dealing with in terms of how we deliver that programming, but in terms of offering students AP and, and those types of opportunities, those high-end opportunities, those are still gonna be intact, we're not gonna cut any of those core programs, and we're also gonna protect the electus for, for, for those kids who, who trend in that, uh, succeed in that area, so we're trying to keep it as, as comprehensive as possible.
And then, one last one, sorry.
That's fine.
Um, is there, are there any state or federal grants or funds that we haven't tapped yet that are potentially out there?
Not a one.
Had to ask it.
Not a one, it's out there and it's a possibility, we're on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I noticed the cuts are all directed at teachers and non-instructional support staff. So eight and a half positions, which means you're talking about class sizes. A class size of 10 can feel like 30. And a class size of 25 can feel like 10, depending on the makeup of that class. With teachers in droves leaving the profession because of significant issues within a classroom, by increasing class size in any way, shape, or form is going to drastically impact many of those teachers' everyday existence, which is a huge concern. Okay? Looking at this over, what I'm concerned about is that it's always easy to get rid of or to cut non-instructional staff or teachers. When the administrative staff came together, did they at any point say, maybe we don't need as many administrators?
We did, we had that conversation as well.
Because we do have three administrators at an elementary school, which is significantly more than a lot of districts. And granted, we do have a lot of needs there.
Sure.
And, again, is it want versus need? Where if we did lose an administrative position, which does not have that immediate attention to those 20 kids, because kids right now are really struggling. There's significant issues in relation to mental health, there's significant issues in different grades that have significantly fallen behind. And that teacher in that room that is able to look at 15 kids instead of 25 kids, those extra 10 kids in that classroom could, in some respects, not get the services that they need in comparison to maybe not having an administrator, I mean, I'm not trying to target administrators, it's just, it just seems
Fair question.
Easy when, when you're looking at these cuts to not also go for a big-ticket paycheck. Like, because a big-ticket paycheck would be potentially two teachers' salaries. And that would reduce, potentially, I'm not, know the numbers, I'm not-
No, I, I, I understand the point.
So, I guess, and that's my concern, because the reality is, it's always easier to go for the teachers, it's always easier to go for the non-instructional support staff. And yet
Oh, sorry.
There's larger things that can also be, cause I don't know, it just, it just seems like there's a gaping hole in where the cuts are coming.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll respond now.
Okay.
Basically, um, we had those conversations, we have those conversations every year. And I think in, in October, when we were, came to this committee to talk about adding an administrator at the elementary school, we knew at that point that the budget was gonna be difficult. Um, you know, and I, and I look at our administrative structure, back in 2008, we had five people working in special education. Right now, we have 2.8 people overseeing special education. The needs are going up, the requirements going up, the paperwork's going up, the legality of it's going up, um, so we needed that additional position. You know, I go back to 2012, when we restructured the position, eliminated, uh, a dean. Uh, I go back to 2015, when we cut, um, an administrator at the elementary school to add a council, that council's still in place, we're still at three councils at the elementary school. So in the past, when necessary, we have eliminated administrators, if it was appropriate at that time. We had the conversation in the room, um, and it was uncomfortable. Uh, but given where we are at this point, and given the, the fact that this committee supported 7-0 on October 18th to add administrator, I thought it would be not in the best interest of the district to go back, knowing of the requirements, knowing all the paperwork, knowing the expectations, and, uh, knowing, knowing the needs of our kids. So that was, uh, that's our recommendation.
I think I did express concerns that by adding another administrator, it would cost a teacher. And now we're costing teachers. Which, again, the need of students are more teachers to be able to pinpoint their direct needs. Not more administrators who are very far removed from the kids who we are serving.
And I, I don't disagree with you, but I would also say the operation of a school isn't incumbent upon the administrators, so effective, appropriate, efficient operation of a school-
Probably, but I could probably do my job with-
Requires the right level of supervision administration. So I, I, I don't disagree, I, I just think at this point, this is where we are, particularly in light of the action we took in October.
That's fine, I'm just voicing my concerns that there's a gaping hole in what was cut.
I, believe me, I'd rather be at the, the, the 1.5 ask.
I would too, absolutely.
I get it. Tough decisions have to be made every year, and I think this is the recommendation that we're bringing forth to the committee, if the committee wants to vote it down, that's entirely the will of the committee.
I'd just like to say, I don't think it's fair, say it was easy to decide to cut teachers.
Oh, I don't think it was easy, but it's just the-
That's a term you use.
It's just the go-to.
To be fair to Dr. Flanagan and the staff, I don't think any of this was easy.
Oh, I don't think so either, but
Okay.
It's where the cuts always come. It's never an administrator.
Well, I disagree, cause the administrators have been cut in the past. They haven't been cut in your tenure here, um, they haven't been cut in my tenure here. But we haven't been on the committee that long.
They have in mind.
They have in mind, I go back to the years that I was on finance committee. There were a couple of years where the, in, from previous administrations, um, where teachers were not cut, it was all administrators that were cut. For the same reason, we wanted to, uh, protect the number of teachers in the classrooms, but also we were getting close to getting to the point where we were going to be violating the contracts with the teachers back then. But, um, you know, we went for a number of years, um, understaffed in administration, where, you know, I would regularly go by and I would see principals and, um, and assistant super, or superintendents in the building still at 8, 9 o'clock at night, still doing their jobs, just to try to keep up with it. So, I, I
I guess-
I, I, I just, I just don't like, it's okay, don't worry about it, I, I just don't want you to, um, make the statement that it's never administrators.
Okay, that's fair.
This, this, the administrations, administrators that I have worked for in the past and with in the past, they're very conscious of that, uh, and, and they take that into consideration, and I've heard some of these conversations in the past, and I've had administrators talk to me about it in the past, and it, it's, it is always an extremely difficult conversation, you know? Don't wanna put it on the teachers, we don't, cause they have a hard enough job as it is. But as, you know, Dr. Flanagan said, it does get to the point where you still have to run a school. And, uh, it, it's a difficult decision, but it has to get made sometimes.
I guess my, as a citizen, I haven't noticed as many administrators, so maybe it's the administrators that I, I'm not aware of that have been cut.
Sure.
Which could be the case, but in my experience of the ones I visualize and I see, uh, it's always seemed that Tinsborough has been very administrative-heavy. But maybe that's just the perception as a citizen, as opposed to not part of the committee.
I, I think that's probably fair.
That's fair.
Yeah.
And I didn't mean to say that it was easy, that was not my intention, it just, in my educational experience, it always feels like it's that. Thank you for your time.
Any other?
Just one comment if I may. Since Dr. Flanagan has taken over as superintendent, with these eight and a half cuts, I believe we're at 28 or 29 full-time equivalents cut from Tinsborough public schools since you've taken over.
I can get that number for you, it was in the teens-
It was 20.5, I believe. So when he says we don't just take the budget and go from one year to a next, 28 full-time equivalents cut from our budget in the last six years is a huge number. And it's from every group. From our maintenance personnel, janitor staffs, our teachers, our administrators, our administrative assistants, there's a lot of superintendents out there that, and assistant superintendents and principals that all have their own administrative assistants.
Our central office went from 15 people down to eight in the past five, six years, five, six years.
Five or six years, so, that's, uh, seven cuts right there in, in the administrative area, so, 28 full-time equivalents. Compare that to any of the other departments in the town of Tinsborough. And we employ the majority of-
If I could piggyback off that, I think that's to Dustine's point, well, we used to have a curriculum coordinator, we used to have a grant writer, we used to have a professional development coordinator, we used to have all these other positions that existed, uh, that you wouldn't see. You wouldn't see, uh, they're gone, and now he does it, I do it, Joe does it, Sarah does it, Sharon Fairbanks does it, um, we just, we pick it up to protect as many teachers in the classroom as we possibly can. So, uh, but that, it's a fair point.
Now, I got a quick question, what's, what's the average, um, student enrollment between like, um, the elementary, the middle, and the high school? Like how many, you know, not, not an exact number, how many kids, being first, second, third grade, you know, I'm just looking at the, the-
So we try to be 18 and 20 in the lower elementary, low 20s in the upper elementaries, in the 20s, low 20s at the middle school. And the high school depends on the, what classes the kids are taking, um, but it's usually high teens to mid 20s. Maybe like an AP class has 10 or 11 kids in it, but it's still, that's a program that we're gonna run and not cut because of 10 kids in a class, you know, so we gotta protect that, but, and that's off the top of my head, I mean, I can certainly run the numbers if we had to, but
No, I'm just curious.
That's about where it is, yeah.
Did you have something?
I got something. I have a, I have a comment as a parent and a citizen, and then just kind of a cautiously optimistic question. Um, the comment I wanna make as a parent and a citizen is just to reinforce my vote in October, or whenever it was, to hire Kristen Russo as that additional admin. Just anecdotally, talking to other parents, Dr. Riley was swamped this year. And I am sure that having her on board will be a huge help. And I would not doubt, as a parent and citizen, that we see in the future, as this, as these classes start to move their way up through the middle school and the high school, that we're having the same conversation in four or five years as to whether or not Mr. Adams is going to have an assistant or another coordinator at his side as well, so just something to keep in the back of our head, that these needs do have administrative needs in the back. And while it absolutely is hard to make the decisions to cut teachers, and I volunteer at the elementary school, and I see what those teachers are going through, and I know that these are hard decisions, and that it will affect everybody, sometimes those are the decisions we have to make, and sometimes they're just hard. So that's just my comment as a parent and a citizen. Um, and then, so my cautiously optimistic question. If Governor Healy does come out and OSD slacks off a little bit, is this staffing cut the first place that we'll look to start to kind of-
100%, teachers first, 100%. And, and just so you know, the recommendation was to hold districts harmless for anything over their 2.5% increase. So essentially, look at what the increase had been, the 2.7%, anything above that would be hopefully potentially backfilled to the communities to support that, so ours was 138,000, or 138, I think, so if another 85,000 came in, you know, potentially we could look at a, a teacher or two to, to, to plug back in.
Okay.
You know, and again, you know, it's March 21st, you know, the census also said that we had 75 kids gonna register in kindergarten, we've had 106 so far. So if we find that we need another teacher at some point, we're gonna have a different conversation, and this is going to continue to evolve, we don't know where we are, but as, as of today, this is the recommendation. To get to a number.
Are there any other budget-related comments or questions? Mr. Messina, thank you for all this work. And I know that it doesn't stop tonight, it continues every day, so, um, thank you for, for all of this.
Okay.
Mr. Messina, do we need formal action on this tonight to have it a public hearing next week, or do you need-
So, so my next comment was going to be, we don't necessarily need a formal action tonight, it's, if the school committee wants to, to make a vote, I think it's actually written that way to, to vote in the initial budget. What will happen next Tuesday night, we'll start the meeting, uh, your regular meeting by opening up a public budget hearing. Once that hearing is done, and we close that hearing later on in, in your agenda, you'll, you'll vote in the, the, the budget, the budget with the school committee budget portion, uh, as a final number to present to the town. But you do that after the public hearing?
Okay, so-
So no action tonight?
No action tonight. No vote tonight?
Not necessary, no.
Okay, very good.
And again, we're happy, you know, we gave you a ton of information, please dive into it. Shoot Joe an email, myself an email, we'll happily get back to you and, and answer any questions you may have.
Absolutely.
Thank you both for attending, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
I have, I have staying.
Okay, great.
I want, this is my first time, I, I'd like to see how it goes.
All right, so we will, um, go back to item number four, which is correspondence. Dr. Flanagan?
Yes, so thank you, Matt, I'm sure, we have two, uh, items for correspondence, uh, in your drive tonight. One is, we are partnering with the town, uh, as part of a state cybersecurity grant. Appreciate, I think, I believe this came from ARPA funding on the town side, but they extended the invitation to us to piggyback on to that, so it's an assessment of our security systems in the school. Uh, Mr. Piper, uh, took the lead on that and has put the information out to teachers. I know that I, I think, uh, we've had several teachers already participate in the training right now, uh, the modules, so that gives us a sense of where we are, and maybe identify some of the gaps that we have, and we can correct those.
Mr. Flan, uh, Dr. Flanagan, um, I actually participated in this in my former district, and it was actually, just personally, really helpful.
Great.
I changed a lot of things in my, the way that I did things, so. Not only is it good for the school and the district, but it's, it's good personally as well, so, win-win.
Yeah, the ABC 123 password doesn't cut it, so. Um, the other piece of information that's in your folder has been a, a request to bargain from Council 93, our Maintenance and Custodians group, they would like to, um, begin that process as their contract is up, uh, June 30th this year. And I believe that's Tony, Ryan, and Jeff on that committee. Um, so we'll get back to you on that, and that's it for correspondence.
Great, uh, for personnel, we have notifications of resignation from Samantha Rosa, THS math teacher of, over six years of service. And Rachel Leo, TS, TMS, administrative assistant, um, with over 10 years of service, wishing both of you well. Uh, notification for request for paternity leave for Michael, is it Leyden?
Leyden.
Leyden.
Yep.
THS, uh, foreign language teacher, and congratulations to Mr. Leyden. And a notification for maternity leave for Colleen Hood, a TES teacher, um, expected to go on leave around May 11th, and, uh, wishing you good luck. Share the success, Nate.
Yeah, so, it's been a couple of weeks, but I tried to condense it. So over the last few weeks, TES has welcomed, um, keys to literacy coaches into their classrooms to see the strategies that have been shared through the ongoing professional development that they've been working on. Um, the keys to beginning reading cohort, which was from grades K through 3, has completed training modules around phonological awareness, phonemic- has completed training modules around phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency. And then the key comprehension strategy cohort, grades four, five, and six, has completed training modules that enhance comprehension and understanding. Kindergarten through grade five, teachers opened their classroom doors to consultants and their grade-level colleagues, and teachers and service providers were able to observe the science of reading strategies in action. And then Mrs. Kavanaugh, I would just like to give a special thank you to TES teachers for all their hard work with ELA this year. They've been working pretty hard on that. TMS had a great spirit week. They had a successful winter fest as well, with many students and staff participating. And then their March manus, which was last week, took place with around two hundred middle school students participating in the dodgeball tournament on Thursday after school, and then they had their finals on Friday. My brother and sister both did that. They had a really great time, so that was fun to see them enjoying. Then they also had basketball three v three, which took place on Friday after school as well. And then TMS would like to thank the high school for allowing them to use the gym to do that. The celebration of learning at the middle school was well-attended, and the students did a great job as tour guides for their families. They showed everyone around to everything that they were doing in their classes, so that was cool for them to do. And then the building project, obviously, is well underway, as you can see. Student, staff, and parents all adapted their routines to use the back door as the main entrance at the middle school. And then, like I mentioned earlier, they would like to extend their thanks to the high school for, you know, allowing them to use the gym, and for the teachers and everything who are understanding, obviously, with a bunch of middle schoolers coming in every day. So, and then at the high school, congratulations to the THS theater program. They recently qualified for the semifinal round of the METG festival for their performance of Little Women. Sabrina Osborne received the Stage Managers Award. Natalie Lantziner earned an Excellence Award for Assistant Directing. And Olivia Balkin took home an award for Excellence in Costume Design. Olivia Lambert, Caitlin Rao, and Izzy Schaefer earned acting awards, so great job to them. Winter sports season is wrapped up. Congratulations to all the teams and winter athletes. THS looks forward to recognizing them all at the Winter Sports Awards Night, which is this Thursday, March twenty-third. And then spring sports started up yesterday, so that's exciting to see. And then congratulations to February Students of the Month, Emily Fugazado, Olivia Lambert, Lindsay Methot, and Sean Sucasium. And as well as March Students of the Month, Caitlin DePersio, Trevor Drew, Paige Matthews, and Colin Riley. And that's it.
Thanks, Nate. That was a lot.
Like I said, two weeks.
Yes, that was great.
Very fluent.
This is our favorite part of the meeting, is to hearing what they're doing at the schools. Thank you. Dr. Flanagan, the superintendent report.
Sure, so we'll go right down to the MSBA update. Oh, sorry, right there, the school committee meetings first coming up. What's not listed on here? So you can see with school committee meetings, we have a budget presentation to the Select Board on April tenth. I received that communication from Tom Andrew Hansen, so we presented to the Select Board on April tenth. Pretty similar presentation we just did tonight. What's not on here is either the March twenty-ninth or April fourth, School Building Committee meeting. There will be another School Building Committee meeting at some point in the next two weeks. We're just trying to nail down basically what the design, sixty percent design, when there's sixty percent design development, when that will be completed. But that's the rest of your upcoming meeting schedule. So, Mr. Woodlock, if we can go right down, keep going to MSBA update. Keep going, perfect, right there. So the MSBA update, as of now, we had a School Building Committee meeting on March fifteenth. It was actually, it was, it was great because they brought in all the materials and finishes and laid them out on the table. So we were able to touch the, the products and the, and the finishes, and it was, it was a great opportunity to see the colors come together. And it's exciting. They, they presented some pretty finished renderings to see the potential of where the, the new middle school's gonna be. So that was really exciting to see all that information. As of completed work at this point, they have almost finally decoupled the gym systems. There's one last fire pole station that they're gonna decouple on Friday. The abatement of gym is done. DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, came on today. And they are actually requesting that we expand the poly covering that currently exists over the main entrance and five windows on each side at the middle school to expand, expand it to the entire width of that facade that faces the gym. This Saturday, they're going to begin taking down the skybridge. So they're gonna take down the first section of the skybridge from the school itself to the columns that are in the walkway, and then they're gonna leave it there. They're gonna leave the skim coating up on that facade that faces the middle school, and they will take all the skim coating off the other three sides. We went through a meeting yesterday, and they talked about where the demolition pile will be, where the truck wash station, wash station will be. They explained when a truck comes to take the material away, it will have two layers of ten-gauge vinyl. It will be sealed, it will be glued, it will be taped, and then there'll be a cover that goes over the truck to get the container out of here. We're going to run, they're going to run five to eight trucks today. They will truck all the demolition to New York. So it's not like it's gonna be trucks coming around all day long. Once the truck's gone, we won't see it till the next day. So five to eight trucks, it'll be a three-week process. So the plan is to get the first section down of the skybridge, skim the rest of the building, then come back, take the rest of the skybridge and the facade, skim that last facade, and then it'll be the Supersteel construction demo. So, so effective Saturday morning, we'll start to see things happen. DEP did say today that they want the poly that's covering the main entrance of the middle school to stay intact throughout demolition. So that'll be up through probably April seventh. So it's about a three-week process. The other thing that they told us, just so I can get this on camera now, is oftentimes during demolition, people think that there's dust in the air. They are going to soak everything down, and what they often see is mist. It's not dust. We will have air quality control monitors that have done a baseline that'll be onsite. And if at any point there's a blip in the, in the monitor, they're gonna shut the thing down, and that person's in charge of when demo can begin again. So talking about the, the processes and the experience of this group, it was, it was amazing to hear. They have this down with science. So, so that begins Saturday, so that's exciting. So that's the, that's pretty much the upcoming work.
Dr. Flanagan, I remember them saying too, just to a concern that you had mentioned about spring sports have begun, and we have dump trucks going around. They will have personnel flaggers out there making sure that it's safe for a truck to proceed before, you know, there will be no accidents with any students, you know, crossing a road with a, with a vehicle coming down. So seems to me that they've thought of pretty much everything. This is what they do, and they're very, very good at what they do.
I think the last thing we identified in our meeting today with Mr. Pollitt and Mr. Ogden was we need to incorporate signage for teams that are coming from other schools and kids that are here on the weekend. You know, the, the school generally isn't open at two o'clock on a Saturday afternoon, so they're gonna need to know, park in the third parking lot and walk around the back of the school. Because if you try to walk around the middle school, that's the fence line all the way to the woods. You're not gonna get there. So we need to work on signage before recreational sports start in town. And we have Ms. Paloma reaching out to all athletic directors in the district to let them know their kids are cut through the school.
Dr. Flanagan, does, will the front doors of the middle school remain closed the next three weeks?
Yes, but they are open for emergency egress. It's just, it's just a zipper. So we have to inform the kids that if, in the event of a fire drill or anything, you can go out there. But for the next three weeks, we need to keep that closed.
What about the windows? Are the windows on the building to remain closed? I'm not just talking on that side. Are you talking the whole building?
No, just that side. Just that side. They're gonna poly those. The other ones can be open. And my understanding is this is excessive poly, but it's what was recommended, so we do, we do what we're told. So that's, that's the MSBA update as of today.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, we've already done eight B and C, so moving on to new business.
Oh, teaching and learning, sorry. Mr. Woodlock.
No, we don't wanna skip you. This is the other exciting part of our meeting.
Yeah, this is a good part. And so one of, one of the things I did over the last couple of weeks was ask our administrators, you know, come up with something that you were proud of that, that's in line with our, you know, second big district initiative. So what we focused on was, you know, where are we providing comprehensive and inclusive learning environments? And so this obviously is not a comprehensive list, but just some highlights so you guys can know what, some of the things that are going on. Slight update, you know, you've had multiple presentations about the wind block that's going to be going into a pilot here at the high school. Mrs. Trainer met with all of the students, explained to them exactly what was going to be happening as part of their scheduling presentation that they do each spring. And they also got feedback from the outgoing seniors who won't really be able to enjoy this process a whole lot, but just to get some ideas about, you know, what are your thoughts on this? What would you like to see? And so getting some student feedback there is definitely part of inclusive environments. And also wanted to highlight the, the instructional practices of Mrs. Makovich, Ms. Taylor Makovich, former student. Not surprised she's doing amazing, but she has been really working to incorporate SEL practices into her classroom every day and making sure that the students that come into that classroom have ample opportunities to kinda think about and self-reflect on where they are, how they're feeling, and giving them strategies to, you know, when you're feeling really down, these are some things you can do, or when you're feeling really up and we have work to do, you know, these are breaking, you know, building in breaks and things like that. So she's, she's going above and beyond what we've asked her to do for this first year as we roll out some new expectations for teachers. Oh, boy. Here we go. Secondly, at the middle school, I think Nate mentioned something about the keys to literacy that's been going on for professional development, and we have outside vendors coming in that have been really well-received. So some of the things they've been looking to do is get some real calibration amongst the teachers in, like, teams. And so they've been focusing on, you know, something that was identified as, you know, our kids have some gaps here, and we need to work on it, which is summarizing skills, and giving them different tools to utilize across all teams that kids will know these particular skills. What typically happens is there are some things that some teams do and some things that other teams don't do, and that's okay. We don't wanna take autonomy away from teachers. But we do wanna say like, these are things that happen all the time, so that when you get a student from, you know, fifth grade even to sixth grade, or sixth grade into seventh grade, you can expect that they're gonna know what this is when you do it. So Mr. Pollitt really wanted to highlight the sixth grade, and they're really, you know, digging in. And it's hard to take on new expectations and new things in the middle of a school year. Teaching is a difficult job. But they've really gone, gone at it and done a great job of using specifically top-down webs, two-column notes, and these different summarizing strategies. So trying to make sure that kids have a baseline of those typical things. And, I did it again. Mrs. Kavanaugh really wanted to highlight the, the efforts of the kindergarten team. You can't click this link here, but if you go to the website, the school website, and you just type in kindergarten in the search, it'll pop up there and you can look at it. Jackie Richardson worked with them to create a great video, and it's nothing cuter than looking at kindergarten kids in action, you know. So it's really a great little video, but I just wanted to highlight the efforts of the kindergarten team and the students. It's probably been a long time for many of you since you've been in a kindergarten classroom. And I've had the great opportunity to see what that looks like in the first week of school, and now see what it looks like in March, and wow, what a great job they do. And these kids, they come in with limited experience with routines and rituals and that type of thing, and the, the work that they do with these youngsters is, is pretty amazing. So congrats to our kindergarten team, and when you get a chance, take a look at that video. It's really, really pretty special.
Just add on that, congrats to the kindergarten team. Kindergartners are tough. All right, so now we can move on to nine A, the twenty-three, twenty-four school committee calendar.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In your drive, you will see the draft school committee calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four. Very similar to this year's calendar. We open with teachers, or the proposals that we open with teachers on August twenty-eighth before Labor Day. This is all contractual. This is what we've done in the past. Really, no curveballs here. It's, it's kind of the same calendar we've, we've used in the past.
Is there any discussion, any questions on that calendar? Maybe just a moment if you're looking at it. I'll seek a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar.
The move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, Matt carries.
For the record, we did work with the union leadership on this as well, so we're all in agreement on this.
All right, great. I don't think we have a nine B.
We do not.
And moving on to finance with Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You may notice there are no signing of bills tonight. We're actually sorta off a little different cycle right at the moment. There were bills signed in lieu of your school committee meetings, both on the March fourteenth meeting. Mr. Mullen, as your single signer, did come in the next day and signed thirteen bill warrants that are listed in your drive. Also, in lieu of the February twenty-eighth meeting, Mr. Mullen came in and signed fourteen bill warrants on behalf of the committee. Again, in the drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, this is actually the signing of payroll we would have done on February twenty-eighth. The payroll dated February thirteenth and February twenty-seventh. We'll do the next two payrolls at your next meeting on the twenty-eighth. Also, the February financial package is in your drive, and those are your three reports. The school committee budget as of the end of February, the revolving account balances at the end of February, as well as the student accounts. And for enrollment, I will leave that to the chair.
Sure. At TES, we have seven hundred and sixty-six students. At TMS, we have four hundred and four students. At THS, we have four hundred and sixteen. We have twenty-four out-of-district students for a total of one thousand six hundred and ten students in Tingsboro Public Schools. School committee discussion, Nate?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Just thank you to Mr. Messina for all the work that's been put into the budget. I'm sure, you know, even after tonight, there's probably something has moved on there that you haven't seen yet. But it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, so we do appreciate everything you put into it.
Thank you.
Joe, yes, thank you so much. This was an amazing presentation, and you've done so much work, and it's very appreciative how detailed it is. You, you do a great job. Also, I'd like to take note of Rachel Leo's resignation. She's always been a sunny disposition in the middle school office. Whenever I had to go down and chat, she was always there, and she was always very pleasant to chat with. Congratulations to the winter sports teams. They did a great job. And that's it.
Mr. Woodlock?
Thank you.
Joe?
I'm good tonight. Thank you.
Rob?
Have a great job to Joe. Echo for Mrs. Leo leaving. I was gonna wait till the end of the year to say something, but since you brought it up, why not? Go on my usual long diatribe. Rachel has been there for quite a while now. She's always, as you said, sunny disposition. She's, not, not only that, but she's been, you know, so well organized. You know, you have a question, any question whatsoever, and she's gonna answer that for you. I know the administration, it depends on it greatly. She is going to be missed quite a bit in that role. And the fact that she is giving us plenty of notice to be able to help find somebody of quality to be able to move into that role to replace her, which would be difficult anyways, but it was very nice of her. Congratulations to the winter teams, and they did do a wonderful job this year, particularly the boys and girls basketball teams. I know somebody who has a member of that, that girls' basketball team there. But that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina, for all the work you've put into this budget. And on a personal note, thank you for educating me on all the finer points of the budget and the budget subcommittee meetings. I know I had a lot of questions, so.
Are you an expert now?
No. That's still Mr. Messina.
So I visited the schools with Dr. Flanagan a few weeks ago. Every year, I take a trip through all three schools. This has been a long meeting, so I'll save my report for next week. Instead, I'll thank Joe, like everybody else, thanks for the budget. Great job, as always. Thank you, Eddie Rong, for coming out. I think it's valuable having you guys come out every year. I think it's definitely a good partnership. And echo it, Dustine and Rob said about Rachel. Great presence in the middle school, which is gonna be missed.
Thank you to Mr. Messina, and just as important to your entire staff, Dr. Flanagan, for working with Mr. Messina and getting all these sad cuts to where we need to be. Thank you to our friends in the finance committee for coming in this evening. I echo the rest of the comments.
Thank you, the finance committee. Appreciate you coming. I would just like to say to our seniors, you are entering your last trimester here at the Tingsboro Public Schools. Enjoy it, have fun, take a deep breath. I know that the next month and a half is gonna be very difficult for you as you start to think about that May first deadline and where you're gonna go to college and make big life decisions. Take a deep breath. It's gonna work out. Enjoy your time here in Tingsboro, all right? Enjoy your time here in Tingsboro, all right? That's all I have.
All right. I would like to thank Mr. Woodlock for the deep dive on teaching and learning. I caught you off-guard there, didn't I?
I usually just fly to the...
I know.